Start this, it is now five thirty, so we're gonna go ahead and get this. Show on the road. Good afternoon of everyone. I hope everyone is have having a good, good day. This is Tuesday, July, July twelfth, twenty twenty-two. And it is the reg- regular board me- meeting of the, the Adelanto Elementary School District. So can, this is our call to ord- order. Can, can I have a roll, roll call, please?
Trustee Akas. Trustee La French.
La French present.
Trustee Turner.
Turner present.
Trustee Webster.
Webster present.
Trustee Benz.
Benz is present. The time is still five thirty. Awesome. Okay. Go, going on to one point zero four pledge of, of allegiance. If you, you could please stand and place your right, right hand over your heart. Red, ready be begin.
I pledge allegiance. Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, go, going on to a do- adoption of the agenda. Agenda two point zero zero one per proposed additions, deletions, and adjustments in the, the order of business.
Madam President, we do not have any tonight.
All right, thank you. Two point zero two, a adopt option of the gen- agenda. Can, can I get a mo- motion to adopt? Okay, I get, I have a mo- motion from Ek- Akas and a sec. Second from Web- Webster. Do we have did discussion? Call for, for the vote.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Akas. Trustee Benz.
Benz, I. Mo- motion passes five zero. Go, go, going on to closed session, session. We, we will be be take, taking three points zero zero two and three points zero zero three into closed set session. And we're gonna go on to four pub- public test- testimony, be be for closed session, session.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Good evening, members of the board. The public comment period is administered by state law and is the point in the meeting set aside for members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Open meeting laws do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. Protocols for speakers. Any person who wishes to address the governing board on closed session agenda items only must complete and submit an A E S D speaker request form five minutes before the meeting is called to order. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although they cannot take action or discuss them, not on the agenda, items not on the agenda, they listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Additionally, a public speaker can be cut off for exceeding the allotted time or for willfully causing an actual disruption to the meeting. Before cutting a person off or removing someone, the board will give at least one clear warning. If you were cut off or warned last time, please consider that your warning. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board on each closed session agenda item. The board limits the total time for public input on each item to twenty minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation, depending on the topic and number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional person speak only if they have something new to add.
Thank you. Um, do we have speak, speakers for, for close?
Not at this time, Madam President.
So I know A E D T T A want, wanted to speak, but they didn't want, wanna wait for the pub- public, the, the open sess- session. And Jen, Jennifer Raid, Raider asked if they, they could speak on the closed sess- session this one time. So I'm gonna go ahead and I'll allow, 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 allow it this one, one time. But you, usually the closed sess- session is for the closed sess- session. So, uh, the rep, represent, senator from A A D T T A.
Madam President, that would be Tammy Smith. She'll be representing A D T A tonight.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. I hope you're having a good summer break, a nice restful summer break. Um, and you know, hopefully, we have summer school wrapped up. Um, a lot of positives from that, a lot of, it was, it was very, it was very enjoyable. The children learned. It was a wonderful experience. Uh, thank for that as well. Um, we did have a problem beginning of the month with the payroll. Um, the checks and the, the stipends, things coming on time. And I wanna right now say thank you to our payroll department. They work so hard. And you know, issues come up. I know that you guys got a lot of calls and I wanna thank you for being professional and dealing with that. And I also wanna say thank you, um, to Michael Kraus. It was a problem and he immediately took attention to it and we worked to, so you know, fix it going forward. And I have to say that I have a lot of hope from this because the quick transparent manner with which, you know, we handled the situation. And you know, like I was at the last meeting, he came up just right away. Just, I mean, again, if we have that accountability, that transparency, we can work together going forward because we're gonna have a lot of problems. It's just the nature of what we do. So there will be more issues coming up, but if we continue with the spirit of working together, staying transparent, again, you know, I'm hopeful for that and I'm very hopeful for next year. I'm really excited. Um, getting things, I'm already beginning planning, but I was planning already last year, so that's just me, who I am. So like I said, I'm really hoping that, you know, going forward, we're gonna have a great year and thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, and I don't think we have and any other speak, speakers.
No, Madam President.
Okay, so we'll go ahead, uh, go, go on to five recess to close sess- session. Can, can I get a motion?
Akas, I motion.
And I need a sec, second. Webster, a second. Okay. Please call for the vote.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Akas.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I. Motion passes five zero zero zero. The time is now five third thirty seven. Thank you. All right. It is now seven forty-three. Perfect time, timing. My trustees. Okay, let's go, go ahead and do a call to ord- order. Please take roll, roll call.
Trustee Akas. Trustee La French.
La French here.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner present.
Trustee Webster.
Webster's here.
Trustee Benz.
Benz per- present. The time is now seven forty-three. Okay, we have no, um, no clo- close sess- session re-report. So we move, move on to a pub- public test, testimony. Do I have a rep, representative from A A D T T A or C S E A? No? Okay, so we have, I think, one on, online speaker.
Yes, Madam President, we'd like to welcome Ms. Angela Espino. Uh, she's on Zoom. Mr. Snatcher, if you could ask her unmute.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Good evening, distinguished Board of Trustees, Cabinet, A S D Staff and Community. My name is Angela Espino and I'm the Library Media Coordinator at Adelanto Elementary School. I'm speaking tonight regarding the increase in hours for library media coordinators. I appreciate the time and efforts that the negotiations teams have put in to make this possible for our hardworking, dedicated librarians. After hearing that we finally made it to the board agenda, I excitedly found Article thirteen point fifty-three for the increase in hours and scrolled, scrolled through it victoriously to find that my name is not on the list. Um, I contacted, emailed Mr. Moran and he notified me that due to our low enrollment, um, I would not receive an increase in hours and suggested I transfer schools. In my eight years as the librarian at A E S, I have, there have been several transfer opportunities available, but my heart and my soul lies within Adelanto Elementary. I've poured every ounce of who I am into our school, not just the library. I know each and every one of our students by name. I know their families. I know what they like to read. I know what they should be reading based on their star data. I collaborate with our teachers to enrich classroom, enrich classroom learning with stories and activities in the library to support the curriculum. I am truly blessed to get to work and serve these students at Adelanto Elementary School and this community. So no, transferring is not an option for me. The students at Adelanto Elementary deserve equity. They deserve access to the same resources as every other child in our district. Why should they be penalized for low enrollment? The district boundaries limit our enrollment. This is not equity. Why should I be penalized for low enrollment? Do our administrators, our teachers receive less money or less hours due to low enrollment? This is not equity. In addition to lower enrollment, we have low test scores, we have low literacy rates and every, and this is not the time to make these resources not available to our students. We're trying to close these achievement gaps. So why are these resources being limited? Our students deserve the extra support that I can provide to them in the library. They need this support. I am fully invested in moving our students forward. I read to each and every class. I share stories about diversity, friendship, kindness, wellness, science, fiction, nonfiction. I differentiate activities to accompany each story. Through reading, our students go places they never imagined, places their little feet can't take them, places their circumstances won't allow them to go. Our students have full access to a diverse collection of books that has quadrupled in the time that I have been there. With the additional responsibilities of curriculum and Chromebooks, these two hours would make a significant difference in my abilities to better serve our students. Tonight, I'm asking the board to consider equity for all our students, staff and schools. If there is anything you can do to ensure that all students receive the same access to resources such as an eight-hour librarian or a six-hour health clerk, please take action. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and next we have in the odd audience, Ree- Risa Bad, 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 Buddy S. Oh, is a mic, mic on, guys? Are we self, self-serve?
Are we good?
Oh, there we go.
That's live. Right, first and foremost, um, I want to offer my congratulations to Mr. Kraus as interim superintendent. Um, you're always a delight to work with and, um, I'm pleased to have you in the seat. Um, second, um, I wanna address the retirement on our agenda. Um, I didn't realize that this was gonna be happening. Um, so I wanna offer my gratitude and congratulations to Diana Tibet. Um, my kid really struggled transitioning back to campus at, you know, after COVID. And, um, she made the process so much easier, even after he had to take a month off. Having two broken wrists, she was so supportive and just has been a stalwart in our experience at Braddock, so I will miss her very dearly. Um, and finally, I wanted to address item thirteen point five three as well. Um, and I wanna thank Mrs. Espino for sharing her experience and testimony on this because she's absolutely right. It is so shocking. I wanted to ask before I heard from her what the process was for selecting these particular campuses and these particular services. And understanding her, with her understanding and with her experience, it really helped contextualize that we are setting our kids at a disadvantage. This is an equity issue for all of our kids. There, it doesn't, the kids can't help where the population center is within the district. Kids are still gonna get hurt at any hour of the day. That doesn't matter how few kids or how many kids are enrolled in a school. They still need librarian services. And she's right, there is so much to do. There are so many tasks being added on that we need to make sure that our labor force is getting the time and the resource, the, the resources that they need to make sure that our kids are adequately resourced, no matter which campus they're on. I'd love to see that improved and to see this revisited with all of our campuses being treated with equity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe that's all.
That is it, Madam President. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. Okay, so now we move, move on to nine cabinet, cabinet re- reports.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of the board and members of the community here with us this evening. Just a few quick updates. We were excited to end on July first our summer sessions, our E S Y Extended School Year for our Special Education Department and the program that they do every year, and then our summer session that we had at our other sites. And I had an opportunity to get out there, as I know several others did, to see the smiling faces on our staff members, on our students. It's always great when we see students happy, smiling and excited to be at school. And so that was a great, um, opportunity to get out there. And we're sad that it ended, but we're looking forward to opening up our school, uh, coming up on August eighth. So we're excited to welcome all of our staff and students back at that time. We're also planning a welcome back for our staff on August third, so that's, uh, save the date. Those of you that are listening this evening out in Zoom land, uh, August third, we will be having a welcome back for our staff. And we're gonna make it as exciting as we can for them as well and welcome them back. Uh, this week, we have two exciting events going on that, uh, various staff members are attending. So in Palm Desert, we have the Student Wellness Conference where staff members from various sites are out there and learning about, uh, how to support our students with mental health and just overall wellness. So we're excited that there was a great showing and of staff that wanted to go to that. And then in Anaheim this week, we also have the Safe Schools Conference. And this also, uh, is a great opportunity for our staff to learn how to help keep our campuses safe. And so we have several, uh, members of our staff that'll be attending that as well, uh, this week. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Dwezen to give a couple of quick updates on academic services. Thank you.
My on? Okay. All right, good afternoon, um, Board of Trustees. So a few, um, important updates from Academic Services. So, um, I'm gonna echo some of your sentiments, uh, Mr. Kraus. Um, but summer school and E S Y closed successfully. We want to, from Academic Services, um, just thank the teachers, the classified staff that work summer school. And a big special thank you to CNS, Transportation, M and O, I T, H R, Business Services for working with us to make sure that that was successful. Um, we are excited, um, about the conference in Palm Desert. We have several of our staff there as well. Um, what's exciting about that is that it's directly aligned to our culture and climate, um, goals and expectations, um, where we're making sure to address the social, emotional and the mental health needs, um, for our students. So, um, I'm already hearing, um, great reviews from our staff and ready to bring those ideas back to our district. Um, I would like to announce, uh, Board, you also received a flyer about our upcoming uh, parent and academy and resource fair on August first. Um, that will be held at Melva Davis. Um, so we'll have classes for parents, backpacks, supplies, giving away to our, um, parents and communities. So you could find that information on the website. Um, it'll also be blasted on social media, in-touch, um, messages as well. Um, trying to make sure that our parents and families know that that event is coming up. Um, so I'd like to thank our Academic Services team for the behind-the-scenes work and making sure that that gets launched. Um, we're also proud of our alternative programs that we're launching in the fall. So we have, uh, what used to be called the Opportunity Program. We're rebranding that. It's being called the Hope Scholars Program. Hope stands for Hope, Opportunity, Positivity and Empowerment. Um, this is an excellent, um, program for students who may be in danger of being expelled, um, have suspensions, just need a little extra attention and support. And so we're excited to launch that. Um, Independent Studies will be back as well for the fall. Um, and so, uh, families can sign up to attend. That information is also on our website. And, uh, we are working to make sure that we launch that virtual academy soon. So we will be, uh, continuously working on that as well. Um, and, uh, Academic Services will be preparing for what's called Federal Program Review or F P M. Um, that will be coming up in September. It'll be a digital review this time. And so we are excited to work with our, all of our district departments to make sure we gather all that information that they need to make sure that we're compliant and following the expectations that we have. So that's it for Academic Services.
Thank you. And now I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Moran to give us a few updates on the Human Resources Department.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening, Board President, Benz, Trustees, Mr. Kraus, district colleagues and community members. Thank you for the opportunity to share a few H R department items. So first, uh, the H R team and I, the H R team and I are excited to begin our work with our new employees, teachers, classified employees, substitutes, uh, both classified and certificated. On July twenty-second, H R will be hosting a clerical substitute and health clerk substitute training in the boardroom. This will be presented by our H R staff, some school nurses. Ms. Christina Root, uh, one of the school secretaries from El Mirage will be assisting. I'd like, also like to give a shout out and thank you to Mr. Barrett, Karen Evers and Brenda Holtz, who will provide training and refreshers on Ares, which is our database system. And that training will be provided to our secretaries, clerks, clerical substitutes on Wednesday, July twenty-seventh here in the boardroom. On Thursday, July twenty-eighth, uh, H R staff will also host a new classified employee orientation. Say a big thank you to our presenters from payroll, the benefits department and H R. This training will also take place here in the boardroom. On Monday, August first and Tuesday, August second, we will, uh, host two full days for our new teacher orientation here in the boardroom. The orientation presenters will be H R, a few teachers and principals, Academic Services Department, the benefits department and payroll department. It's a team effort and will be a great start to our new teachers. Um, this year, H R will be hosting a welcome back training for our certificated substitutes. It will take place at West Creek Elementary School on Tuesday, August second. This too is a team effort. The training will be presented by Kimberly from our H R department, Vicky Bell, who's our district induction agency representative and Kim Smith, a teacher from Victoria McGathin. On Wednesday, August third, H R has set up a training for our secretaries and clerks that will include presentations from H R, risk management, purchasing, uh, children, child nutrition services and transportation. This training will be held at Gus Franklin. On Wednesday, August third, for our back-to-school event in Melva Davis, Melanie from our benefits department is coordinating with local vendors to provide resources, information and some freebies for our employees. Vendors will be present from eleven A M to one P M. And finally, I'd like to thank our H R team, Dana, Alejandra, Melanie, Kim, Gloria and Iredy, and the many site administrators who have worked hard all summer long to hold teacher interviews to help find quality candidates for our vacant teaching positions. Your hard work and dedication is very much appreciated. Thank you for listening. This concludes our H R department comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran.
Thank you.
That is all, Madam President.
Um, Board, do you, do you have an, any que- questions? No?
Okay. Glad to hear the information.
Yes. All right, go, going on to ten point zero one, gov- governing board men, members re- reports and announcements. Um, do I have any vol- volunteers or do I gotta pick somebody?
I'll go first.
All right, we have a volunteer.
Okay, just real quickly, I heard so many great things about summer school. It was overwhelming. The way our team pulled it together and got it off on a great start. I heard the kids were excited. They were happy. The parents were excited and happy. The teachers were excited and happy. I heard it was so wonderful that even the kids didn't want it to end. They were sad when it ended and they're gonna, they, they missed all the little friends that they made. And it was just really great for the kids to be able to have a nice summer school and just enjoy it. So again, I wanna thank the superintendents, uh, Mr. Kraus for putting that together. Really great. I, probably one of the best summer schools we've ever had. Um, I was out of town at the time and I do regret not visiting all the schools to see all the excitement. Um, I was getting text messages and phone calls and all that. But I did stop by one school on the way to the D O, which was Victoria McGathin. And, um, I did get to visit Mr. Han for a little bit. And just the excitement that was there, the photos that they took, the staff was happy. It was wonderful and I know he did a good job. He's done good jobs in the past as, as the principal for summer school. So just seeing that was just wonderful. I mean, I just wished I could have seen a lot more and went to more schools. But other than that, I'm just very happy and very pleased the way summer school turned out. So thank you.
All right, thank, thank you. Who, who would like to, to go, go next?
I can go next. I was wondering if you brought your little sticks tonight.
My sticks, I know. You know what? I'm, I'm gonna write, write, write a note to myself. Bring sticks.
To hit us with.
Okay, so I just want to, um, I don't wanna say the same thing that everyone else said. Okay, so I just want to, um, I don't wanna say the same thing that everyone else said, but I do want to say thank you and how much, you know, I am appreciative towards all of A S D staff that contributed to um summer school. Um, I was in the ninety nine cent store and happened to speak to a lady that said how important the summer school program was to her children and how it allowed her to can, continue to go to work and how much fun that her children had. And so I am putting it out there in the universe that, you know, next summer, I know that we will have even more children involved in our summer school because of all the hype that we have going on this year. Another thing that I wanted to touch bases on and to say that could be like a new slogan for us. Um, the lady that spoke earlier that said, um, spirit of working together, the spirit that we have and the sense of um togetherness that we have even um today is such a great feeling to um have our board and our cabinet and um our A S D family members and everyone here to work together as a team and have a spirit that we have moving forward that I know that I am excited for our new school year to start. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, tr- trustee Web- Webster?
Um, so good evening, everybody. I wanted to start um myself off once again, saying thank you to our, our superintendents for all of their hard work, their great term work um and dedication to A S D. Um, and I want to also go into speaking about next year and how excited I am to see where this district flourishes to. Um, I do want to bring up a suggestion in my comment tonight about possibly being able to bring a student from every school in um at some point in the next upcoming year. Maybe it's just like a, a student sit down on our board, maybe give students a little bit of an opportunity to see what happens here as well. And able to take it back to the school sites. Um, I think it would be really great for student morale and parent pride in their students who do get picked um to come here and spend the night with us um here. And I would hope, I, I don't know, do I ask for? Um, I hope I hear, I get to see it in upcoming meetings. Um, and so I'm gonna leave my comments there. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. Tr- trustee Turner?
Hey, um, good evening, everyone. Um, I'm really excited. Um, especially to hear and I'm, I'm like echo the sentiments of my fellow trustees regarding summer school. I have not heard in a long, long, long time the excitement that I'm hearing about this past summer school. Um, and there were challenges last year and then, you know, the pandemic. But even before the pandemic during summer school, I had not heard and seen the excitement amongst our students, our staff. I have not heard not one negative thing about anything. Um, we, we received several emails about uh children on their field trips, how, how much they're learning, how much they've learned. And uh, thank you, Mr. Carlson, for your email to the board regarding um the field trip that, where was that? Field trip, um, I have a note here and uh Gardner's Hope Production in Redlands. And um, at our next board meeting, hopefully, we'll have a presentation, a student presentation and of what they learned. And I'm really excited about that. I'm excited about the upcoming school year. And I just want to commend Dr. DeWise on and her team, um, the excitement of bringing back um our opportunity program and our independent studies program. And I'm just so excited to hear from you guys. It's been a long time since we heard, you know, we've done your presentations, you know, your annual presentations. But just to hear what the excitement that's taking place in your particular, just your, your particular area is, is amazing. And H R to hear about the new hires and the different training that you have scheduled for, for our staff. And Dr., um, I'm sorry, and Mr. Kraus. Thank you for stepping up to the plate and you've done a phenomenal job, you know, um, you know, thus far. So I appreciate everything all three of you have done. I appreciate our teachers, you know, the excitement. I'm looking forward to the beginning of the school year and beyond. I know great things will transpire with, you know, the excitement of our teachers and our students. Um, I want to make Adalanto a premier place where students don't want to leave. You know, don't want to go home. I want the excitement just to carry through, even go home and talk about the fun that they're having at school. And I know that we're gonna see that, that we're gonna see that change. So with that being said, um, everyone continue, you have a couple more days left, maybe in the last than a month. But en- enjoy your summer and um especially um business services for jumping on that, that payroll problem and getting it resolved. I really appreciate that. And, and I know it was hard work. Um, and I know our family and our teachers appreciate that. And, and so that's a board. So thank you so much. And that's all I have.
All right, hey, thank you. So I got, got to tour with Miss, Mr. Kraus at the schools. And we had gone to um Eagle Ranch and went to Vic, Victoria, Toria McGathen, where everybody told us we mi- missed the fun. I blame him because they had the uh fi- fire trucks out, out there spraying down the kids, which would, would have been great because it was hot. And they had a cul- color run, which I would have skipped, skipped that. But everybody made sure, you missed the fun. Yes, I know. So, but I'm so glad the kids had fun. I'm so glad the kids had that small group time with their te- teachers. And I'm really pleased, you know, to me, it's about what mem- memories we le- leave them. That's really important to me. And I think our, our, our staff left good ones. And I want to say thank you so much because tho- those are the ones that, that stick with them. And I, you know, school is work, but schools should be pos- positive too. You know, they may not re- remember how to div- divide all, all the time, but they sure, sure will re- remember that, that cul- color run when they just got to be a big hot mess. So, um, and I got, got to help with, with kin- kinder, you know. I'm, I'm more, more of a fifth, fifth grade. I love fifth, fifth grade. I te- teach it that that's my spleal. But the kid, kids were, were do- doing art, which kind of, kind of gets pushed back, you know, because we got so, so much work to do. So it was, I'm glad, glad I got, got to go, go out and I'm so glad it went, went well. And I just want to pose a question to the district. If anybody knows what that big tower at Ted Vic is, it's a big tower. If you happen to know, can you email or Ted text me or mi- miss, Mr. Kraus? Because he posed that, that question and now in, in quiet, acquiring minds wa- want to know. So I would, would appreciate it. And that, that's all for, for me. Thank, thank you. Okay, so let's go on to um eleven, eleven point zero zero one, Board Min- Minutes uh approve as writ- written and ord- order filled reg- regular board me- meeting of June twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Assistant Turner, motion to approve.
Thank you. Can I get a sec- second?
La French, I second.
Thank you. And uh, do we have any di- discussion, discussion? Call for the vote, vote please.
Trustee Webster?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee La French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Akis?
Aye.
Trustee Ben?
Ben's, I, motion passes five zero. Okay. Moving on to twelve point zero one, present debt, presentation of the Adalanto E S D dem- demographics and now analysis and in enroll, enrollment project, objection, projections re- report.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Good evening, members of the community as well. Every year we need to examine our demographics in our district and also look at our enrollment, what's going on around us such as new housing. And then we have a firm usually do a study for us. And this evening I was going to present this, but Mr. Rob Murray, who I'd like to call up to the podium with King Consulting, who did this report, uh, was able to actually join us at the last minute. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to him and I will share my screen for the board and uh we'll get through the presentation.
Right. Well, thank you, Mr. Kraus, and thank you. It's a pleasure to actually be here in person. I know I've been here before on the screen and it's nice to be in the room and able to uh just see at least some of the board here face to face again, just to be on the other side of the Zoom uh window now with a couple of others. But uh again, my name is Rob Murray. I am the Director of Demographics and Planning with King Consulting. Uh, and then in addition to those demographics, King is also doing some work with the district with some uh just exploring funding opportunities, aligning that with strategic goals of the district. And there'll be future meetings where we can discuss a little bit more of that. But tonight we really want to focus on your demographic analysis. So with that, uh, Mr. Kraus, if you can go ahead and move us uh yep to that overview. And again, now the whole report that we prepared has a lot of information in it. We're gonna hit really the most important points of that. And then if anyone has questions, anything they'd like to dig into more, I'm happy to talk as much as anyone would like to. But your big points that we want to understand is that first, with Adalanto E S D, your total enrollment peaked back in twenty seventeen, eighteen, and then it's decreased each year since then. And you had been increasing before that point, so a ki- kind of classic bell up and then down again. And based on demographics, and I'll show you again the key reasons why we're saying this, but what we're saying is that just looking at demographics, we would expect district enrollment to continue to go down for the next several years. However, there are some other factors that are going to help offset this. And the big question is just to what extent will the residential development that is finally coming in after a long period of kind of holding and waiting uh going to do? And then you also have this almost unprecedented new grade level with transitional kindergarten expanding from what it has been into by twenty twenty five, uh, a whole grade of four-year-olds that your district is serving. So we'll look at those in a little bit more detail coming up. Uh, but first, if you want to go ahead and move to the next slide, we want to just look at these enrollment trends. Uh, and here's just as I was describing, you can see going back about over the last decade, uh, how the enrollment goes up. Uh, really kind of levels off, but technically peaks in twenty seventeen, eighteen. And then you've been going down like you, like a lot of districts around the state. Uh, twenty twenty kind of really through uh the whole system for a loop. We had a lot of impacts that uh it's looking like kind of coming out with hindsight after the fact, a lot of students, a lot of families did uh kind of that was the push factor that got them to leave. Again, not just your community, communities all up and down the state of California. Uh, and so we did see some enrollment loss that looks like those are students who are not coming back. And so that kind of reset your baseline, but then those same trends we're looking at will keep on happening. The other important thing to point out, and this is just more in terms of getting that confidence in what we're looking at, is that uh even going back to twenty fifteen, that's actually the point where your elementary enrollment had peaked. And so what's happening there is you start having smaller groups of students entering in kindergarten and those bigger groups leaving fifth grade to go to middle school and then graduating out of middle school and matriculating into your high school district. There's just more kids going out from these previous bigger cohorts that you've already had. You know, you get them for nine years, it'll be ten years once you have all the TKs. Uh, and so you can really see that system moving through those kind of bubbles of bigger or smaller groups of kids. And what's happening now is each group that comes in just doesn't have as many kids in it as the ones that are going out the other end. And for as long as that keeps happening, it's very hard for your total enrollment not to go down. Uh, we can go ahead and move to the next slide. Uh, and this is, again, there's a lot of information in the report about the general population and stuff that we get from the census. I think this, if I, you know, Mr. Kraus said I had to kind of keep it, you know, couldn't, you didn't want to be here all night listening to me. It's as much as I just don't understand how anyone could not want that, but uh, but I, I've said, this is the one that I picked that I think really paints the picture. And that if you just look at your census totals, you say, oh, wow, look, look how much the population in our district is growing. But you just break it again, we don't have from the twenty twenty census, the full detailed breakdown of ages, but we have it with over eighteen and under eighteen. So keeping it apples to apples, looking at that over the years, you see between twenty ten and twenty twenty, I mean, you gained about eighty five hundred over eighteen people. You gained about five hundred under eighteen. That split of who has been filling in that population is not the younger families with the school age kids as much. And so we just want to keep an eye on that, see when that really begins to pivot and change. And again, that's something that we, especially with the new housing coming in, want to see what effect that has. But again, if you had been just looking at your population value and thinking, well, good, we're growing, uh, that growth is not necessarily translated into the population that you're enrolling in your schools. Okay, so on to the next slide. And that is, again, we, so we've kind of established what's really going on when we look at these cohorts coming in and the demographics. And mentioned that residential development is one of the big factors. And so the kind of single biggest question we get is, well, how do you know how many kids are gonna come out of these houses? And a big part of why we know that is we look at the houses, because you've had quite a bit that's at least started being recently built. And so we look at those houses, we see for X many houses built, how many kids did you actually enroll that are in your schools once you start a school year after that home is built and been occupied? And we look at it with different kinds of housing, because your apartments look different than your single family homes. And as we see here, affordable housing will almost always, no matter where you are, bring more kids to you than any other kind of housing. Uh, and you actually have pretty strong rates in terms of the number of students you have. For, I mean, these would not be uh bad rates of student generation for a unified district. And you as a K eight district, uh, you also just kind of breaking it into uh kind of different terms with that point. You're a three, five, seven uh rate for single family detached housing really means for about every hundred homes built, you'd expect thirty five, thirty six kids or so uh to come out of those homes that were built and be enrolled in your schools. And that's important because it get, really gives you that gauge for, uh, we work with the city planning departments. We get a sense of what's getting built and when it's going to be built. And then we can bring in those, you know, you have families moving into the district who absent the development wouldn't be here. And those enrollments come on top of what you would have just based on, again, what your births have been, who's already living here and what's going on. So we can go to the next slide. So that's how we kind of know the impact. And now this is uh what we were able to get with some level of confidence from your two cities, Adalanto and Victorville, who have development projects that they are responsible for the approval of that are going on in your district. And you see, you know, a couple thousand units in all these projects. Uh, there might be some additional ones that will come online. I know there's certainly a lot of, uh, you know, additional proposals that will be coming up. That's, uh, as I said, we do want to be up, looking at this and updating it pretty regularly so that we're just aware of what's coming. Uh, but the important thing is, you know, a couple thousand units doesn't necessarily mean a couple of thousand students. And especially not, uh, that's a big uh kind of caveat with that is we're only really looking out about seven years here and not even all of these projects. Some of them are phased out, some of them uh are things that were approved pre-recession that are still viable. But no one's really moving on them yet and the city doesn't anticipate that they'll be producing houses during this window where we're projecting your enrollment. And so that's why, if you, yeah, if anyone was out there crunching the math, you'll see this is a slightly lower rate than what we showed you on the previous slide. That's because not all these units are being built while we're projecting. But you still are looking at during this projection period, six hundred and thirty two more students than what you would have had absent that development. So that definitely helps offset what we would otherwise have been looking at. And we just have a quick map showing where these developments are. Uh, a lot of concentration right now in the West Creek boundary, especially, I mean, you've probably driven by there, you've seen those houses going up. I went and did that today while I was here just to see it myself. But uh, that is one of the big factors uh that we need to acknowledge. Uh, because it is gonna change the trajectory of what you would otherwise be experiencing. But now on to the next slide, again, I mentioned But now on to the next slide, again, I mentioned when I kind of the single biggest factor that really goes in. To your future enrollment is what's that difference between who's moving on? Out of your elementary schools or out of your district entirely versus the size of who's coming in. And still births are the best indicator. Yes, you have a lot of movement both in and out of your district any given year, but still. There's a pretty good pattern to. How many births you had and then four to five years later, how many TK and kindergarten students you get in. And what you really see here is again, uh, local births uh peaked back in two thousand and seven. Yeah, you had a particularly low year in twenty twenty that again is not unique to you. That happened quite a few places. Uh, but what it really means is that that red box you have there, those are the years of births that we know how many births there were. And the kids that you haven't enrolled for the most part yet. And so we kind of know that's the pool you have. Again, it'll be amplified some by new development, by some more families moving in. Just due to the availability of housing. But what we were seeing demographically before that is just that population of children was getting just incrementally smaller. And so those are the kids that are available to enroll. Again, you don't uh. You know, you don't necessarily enroll every kid that's uh born here, but just typically you'd have more moving in, but. Uh, as long as that whole pie gets shrink, you know, keep shrinking, even if you're getting a bigger or smaller piece, you're still just kind of looking at. Fewer kids available. So then just a quick look, uh, that transitional kindergarten that I mentioned. Uh, so these are not kids that are brand new to the district. These are for the most part, children that you would anticipate that you would get for kindergarten. But now more of them have an opportunity to come to you that year before to show up in your enrollments to need a classroom and facilities. Uh, despite, you know, so typically, uh. Ever since twenty twelve, when TK first came into effect, it's been limited to. Just kind of students who are the oldest of the four-year-olds, the ones who just missed the cutoff, uh, when it was rolled back from December to September. Uh, those September, October, November birth dates. Uh, now, starting this upcoming fall, where the state is adding a couple of months of birth dates. Out to by twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, every single four-year-old in the district who wants to come to you for TK. Again, it's not compulsory, just like kindergarten, but everyone who wants the opportunity to enroll in TK. Uh, can come to the district for that. And again, this is kind of unprecedented. We, we don't add new grade levels to the school system. Uh, really ever, except it's happening right now. So. Uh, we're definitely just keeping an eye on that and what that all kind of leads to, you know, there's a lot of other. You know, math and computation and balancing of different factors and weighing things against each other. But what we get to with the enrollment projection. Is you see that uh darker line, the recent trend kind of ticking downward. Uh, the, you know, the kind of big gap that we acknowledge uh was kind of a one-time event with that level of drop. Uh, and then as you move forward, uh, and kind of the combination of the level of residential development that we have. In combination with continuing for the next four years to. Uh, get some of those kids in for an extra year and increase your total enrollment. Uh, all of that is really going to keep you at kind of maybe some modest growth, but really stabilization. Of what otherwise was really primed to be a continuing downward trend. Uh, and then we're getting into the territory of talking about. You know, TK and Kinder kids coming in who haven't even been born yet, but towards the end of uh this projection period. If everything continues on the trends that they're currently looking like, we would expect that downward trend to reassert itself. As again, you're not getting extra TK above and beyond what you had the year before anymore. Uh, but this is again, why it's extremely important that you are doing a really active pulse check on this. Because you have a very dynamic development environment, you have just a very dynamic demographic environment. And so we, you know, while I'm very confident in what you're looking at in the short term of this projection, we really want to. Uh, you know, look out to this kind of twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven time period. Uh, and see what might be changing right now that would affect how that will continue to look. So the big slide, uh, and what you have. Uh, here is, again, we're not going to go into all these numbers, but a few of the key things. So those green boxes, this is again, just how you look at what we call one cohort of students. So all your kindergarteners who you had this year, you go. Over a column and down a row, and those are your first graders next year, and then your second graders the year after that. And you see, and a lot of this is. Due to uh more students coming in from development, that cohort is going to get bigger. It's going to be about a hundred kids bigger by the time you get to the end of the projection period, just based on accruing more students moving into the district. But uh, look at those red boxes, and this is kind of that example you have, uh. You know, when you have nine hundred and thirty eighth graders come out and only eight hundred and sixty-five. Uh, new middle schoolers coming in to replace them, you see, but that just leads to, even with some growth of the cohorts that are still there. That leads to a net loss of enrollment at middle school. And that's what really what you're seeing. You look back at your historical years in the middle school, you had those mid-nine-hundred sized cohorts. Uh, it goes up into the eight hundreds as you hit those upper elementary grades. And even more recently, you're down and already in cohort starting in the seven hundreds. And the early elementary grades. And as that goes on, you see those cohorts that are sized and the. Been nine hundreds phase out. And even with uh some of that amplification that happens from kids moving in from development, there just aren't. As many kids. Uh, but again, the good news is uh. The development, the kids coming in will help kind of stabilize the situation. And then we just really, really want to track those births. Again, track what development is getting approved and see how this trajectory looks. Uh, but based on what we know right now, it looks like the most likely enrollment projection is. Uh, one where your demographics are balanced out by these two unique factors of new TK students in development. And that will lead you to being able to maintain approximately current levels over the next few years. So next steps. Again, uh, one of the big uh just opportunities and challenges with these. Uh, you have just proportionally a lot more of the very youngest students on all these school sites. So just really. Taking that particular focus when you're looking at your facilities and seeing what needs you have to accommodate these. Uh, just, you know, very small students that you have. Uh, I know you're working with uh incorporating this information into a facilities master plan. And then as we continue, uh, again, just make sure that you are have good relationships with those two cities and your county. Just to make sure that when there is new development that enters this picture, that you have a good understanding of what's coming and when. And then of course, uh, you want to kind of in tandem with this, be looking at. Funding opportunities. And I just want to briefly introduce my colleague, April Thompson, uh, because there has been one funding opportunity that since she happens to be able to be here tonight. Just wanted her to just briefly share uh with you. And then I will be happy to answer questions about the demographics.
Good evening. All right. Nope, gonna stay. Um, good evening. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to speak with you. Um, as Rob mentioned, um, oh, by the way, my name is April Thompson and I'm School Facilities Consultant with King Consulting. And I'll try to be brief. As Rob mentioned, you know, we are always looking for um new funding opportunities that are available. And um, one opportunity that we were working with the staff I'm here at Adalanto with is the um. Calshape program, which is administered by the California Energy Commission. And um, it's the, stands for the California Schools Healthy Air Plumbing Efficiency Program. And it's funded by the California Investor-Owned Utilities. Um, currently, it's only been open to um schools located in underserved communities as defined by um. The C E C. Now, the intent of this program is to really take a deep dive into all the mechanical systems at the sites. Um, on the applications and um optimize the performance of those ventilation systems um as best they can. Uh, identify any needed repairs and upgrades. And then what happens is um this process. Re-produces a detailed report. Sorry. Produces a detailed report um that really establishes a baseline of need. Um, for the ventilation systems at these school sites, which is really important um when it comes to future facilities planning. And um, the Adalanto community, I have to say, um, has such a proactive team. That's um been great to work with. Um, and working with Mr. Kraus and his facility staff. We were able to, um, at this point, submit an application for eight eligible um school sites. Um, with a grant request of approximately eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. So we're still working through that process. Um, but um, we're optimistic that as the C E C reviews the applications in their queue. Um, that um those dollars will be um well-spent. Um, optimizing the ventilation systems at the schools here um in Adalanto. And I look forward to continuing to work with this um great team that's here. And with that, I will hand it back over to Rob. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So thank you very much. And again, uh, if anyone has any questions or comments about. Anything that we presented here tonight, we're happy to answer those.
Okay, trustees, do you have and any que- questions?
I don't.
I'm good. Thank you, Rob, so much for your time tonight.
No, my pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, trustees Turner and La French.
I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you. I'm sorry, I was muted. No, I don't have any questions. Thank you for the report. It was very thorough and eye-opening. So we have that information. Something to look forward to.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I do have a quick question. No, actually, well. Well. No, it, well, because I loo- look at the map here and I know down the street from my house, there was some new homes. Put up, but it doesn't look like it's in red here on the map. So I was just one wondering. Was there a criteria that would, you know, um. I'll allow it or was, was it small? Because I don't think it was that big. Was it small?
Uh, yeah, so that is a great question. And a lot of this is uh the best information that planners at the two cities. Or the county were able to supply for me. And then some, uh, some of it was just my own, uh, just going around. Uh, and just looking for uh. You know, a kind of additional things that I could just see from looking at street view and aerial maps and pins that would pop up, but. I would actually welcome if you wouldn't mind, uh, just kind of working through Mr. Kraus or his staff, but just let me, I, I, I mean. That's one I'm very conscious of, uh, again, in this environment that, uh, if there were any, even if they were relatively small. I mean, we still want to just keep an eye on them, uh, and particularly then that be able to follow up with. Uh, what, I don't know which uh planning entity that you're in, but. Uh, just gives me something specific to go back and check with them about and say, hey, you know, let's just make sure that uh anything else kind of on this size. Maybe you just didn't feel like uh it was something that I need, you know, that you needed to give me every single small development. But if there are more, then I would like to know about those two so I can put them into the next update of this.
Okay, I, I was, was unsure. And I was like, well, I know I should be around here somewhere, but yeah, I'll, I'll. I'll, I'll, I'll re-relay the, the.
Yeah, no, probably. Thank you. I'm, I, I love fine tuning these things. So yes, uh, any, any new information is good information. So thank you.
Okay.
On, on that note, um, I did hear over on my side of town. Supposedly that the city council approved several months ago, an apartment complex that is over five hundred units. And I was told it was a very lengthy uh city council meeting. And that the builder said that they, that our school district would even furnish a school for the apartment units. Which of course they cannot, you know, promise that, they, they gotta come through us. But I guess they really sold it to the city council for this apartment complex on my side of town. And I was wondering, have you heard about this or know anything about it?
No, and is that city of Adalanto?
Yes, yeah. Can you look into that?
I, I would be, yes, I'm very interested in looking into that, especially with that uh second point that you saw that is.
Yeah, it would be over by Columbia and Ted Vic uh school over off three ninety-five and um. I would, I guess, Palmdale uh would be the cross streets. I was told it's a five hundred uh unit apartment complex that they're going to be putting in. So. If you can find out, let me know.
Yeah, I know, then certainly, uh, I perhaps uh kind of in the short term, some updates uh forthcoming. Uh, with some of this, because you know, we certainly do want to make sure that we are. Capturing as much of what's real and what's really going to happen to over the next few years as we. Can. So like I said, broadly, everything that we just talked about is the case, but yeah, let's get as many of those specifics.
Exactly.
Down pat as we can. So yes, thank, no, yeah, please, uh, just do continue to let me know of anything that you think, hmm. I know something that I don't see there. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank, thank you. And I think we're done. I think we're good.
All right. I think, thank you all very much. Good night.
Tonight.
All right, so go, going on to third thirteen con- consent. Uh, gen- agenda. We will, will be taking i- items thirteen thirteen point zero two. Through third thirteen point fifty-five. Does N, any trustee want to pull an item?
Yes, I'd like to pull thirteen point fifty.
Thirteen point fif- fifty?
Yes.
So five, okay. Okay, trustees and anything, anything else?
Yes, I would like to pull thirteen forty-eight. And thirteen fifty-three.
Two forty-eight, I guess, and thirteen fifty-three. I guess. Okay, trustee Web- Webster?
Nope, I think mine have been covered.
Okay, trustee Turner?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay. Okay, so. I need a mo- mo- motion to approve. All of the i- items minus. Thir- thirteen point forty-eight. Thirteen point fifty. And thirteen point fifty-three.
I motion to approve.
Hold on.
Okay, sorry.
No, okay, I'm sorry. Sorry, we're, we're fine. I'm sorry, sorry. Okay, so I have a mo- motion from trustee Love French. To approve.
I'll second.
And I get a second from trustee Ekis. Any discuss- discussion? Hearing none, please call for the vote.
Trustee Webster.
Aye.
Trustee Turner.
Aye.
Trustee La French.
A French, aye.
Trustee Ekis.
Aye.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I mo- motion pa- passes five zero zero. Okay, so moving on to fourteen point zero one, let's go over the things that were pulled. Let's start off with, I'm making sure I didn't miss anything. Uh, for a third thirteen point four forty-eight trustee Ek- Ekis. This, this was your i-.
Yes, yes, I pulled this.
Hold on, fir- first, we, we need, need a mo- motion to approve.
I motion.
Okay, and I need a sec- second.
Webster, a second.
Okay, now we're o- open for this discussion, discussion.
Okay, real quickly, I pulled this one because I couldn't let this go without us recognizing her. Um, Ms. Diana Tibet has been with us for a very, very long time. She's always been a good friend of mine. Um, just a wonderful person, a, a beautiful person. Um, and we've been very blessed to have her in our district as long as we've had, we have. Um, I'm very sad to see her move on, but I totally get it. I understand it. It's just, it's very sad. Um, she's part of our history and I'm going to miss her deeply. So um, I just wanted to wish her well and acknowledge her tonight. And um, that's all. Thank you.
Trustees, does N, anyone else want, want to speak, speak on the, the side item?
Yes, um, I too uh agree with trustee Ekis. Um, Mrs. Tibet is a wonderful person. She served that district well. Um, I remember when I first got on the board, she was principal at Eagle Ridge and. You know, such a big heart and she gave a hundred percent every single day. And we're gonna miss her deeply. When we say family, we think of her. So Diana, congratulations um on your retirement. Your job, you did a job well done. And I, and I, I'm sad to see you go. But I know that you have something bigger and better with your grandchildren and uh stay in touch with us. Okay.
Okay. Okay, so I wish her the best. And again, and I'm sure Love French, French and I, we, we always say, we, we wish that.
I wish.
What was that, right?
Congratulations, I wish for the day. Congratulations, I do. Enjoy those grandchildren.
Okay, so let's go, go ahead and ta- take a vote, please.
Trustee Webster.
Congratulations, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
La French, I.
Trustee Eckes.
Aye.
Trustee Benz.
Ben's I mo- motion pass- passes five zero. Okay, go going on to third thirteen point five zero. Uh, classified pers- personnel cla- classified man man- management new hi- hired. Trustee Love French, did this one, was yours?
Um, yes, it was. I wanted to re.
First, we, we need a motion. I should say that when I say that.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, no, that's, that's me.
Webster, I motion.
Okay, and I need, need a sec- second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. Okay, now we're o- open for dis- discussion.
I pulled this item because I wanted to request for us to table this item until we get additional information. I, I second that motion, trustee Love French motion. So we can bring it back at the next board meeting and the trustees agree to.
Okay, you got a first and a second to bring that.
Okay, um, I, I just asked that the tr- trustees for for forward their in court queries to Ms. Mr. Kraus so that we can get the information you do want.
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll call for, for vote.
So just for clarification, I have a motion from step trustee Webster, a second from trustee Eckes. But we have a substitute motion from trustee La French and a second from trustee Turner to table this item.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and I'll take the vote. Trustee Webster.
We're voting to table? I guess. Um, no.
Trustee Turner.
Um, okay, so what motion is this?
This is to, to ta- table.
Aye, trustee Turner, I. I, I motion to table.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Eckes.
Aye.
Trustee Benz.
Nay. Motion to table passes three two. Okay. Let's go on to third third thirteen point five three. I need a mo- mo- motion to approve.
Webster, I motion.
I need a sec- second.
Trustee Turner, second.
Okay, we're o- open for dis- discussion.
Okay, so I pulled this item because I agree with the, the comments that were made tonight that this needs to be looked at more and see if we can figure out what we can do to make it equal across the board. The increase of work hours, I understand that those two schools in particular do not have as many children, but I still feel that these ladies work hard and they deserve to be treated equally. And if we can find ways to use them during those extra work hours, I think would be really beneficial to the children, to the schools, to the communities. And I would request that we have HR and our superintendent go back and relook at this whole situation to see what we can do. I understand negotiations will have to be talked about in this type of situation with the union. Other than that, tha- that's what I wanted to recommend is that this gets a second look at it. I'm okay with approving it tonight with the understanding that it will be readdressed or looked at so that we can make it equal across the board. So whatever the board's pleasure tonight, or the superintendent, if he has any comment on this one.
Um, I, I, I agree, you know, you know, they, they may may not have as men, many stu- students as the other schools, but they can be used, utilized like for like small, small group of read, reading or, you know, read, read, reading in, in, in ter- intervention. Because it is true, the, the li- librarians know the kids, they know what they can and can't, can't read. And they, they can be an, an extra help to s- small groups. So may maybe ne- ne- negotiations can be made to put some something in so those X extra two hours are just justified.
Yes, thank you. And Mr. Moran, if you could just briefly talk about that process, we're all in support of that. But Mr. Moran, if you just want to speak to that, the pro- the next steps in that process.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kraus. So yes, so what I'm understanding is direction to go meet with CSCA to consider how we can complete the hours for employees who did not move from six to eight hours. And so that process will work out with CSCA's negotiations team. And the way that process will done is if we're able to come to an agreement on a memorandum of understanding, then once we're able to do that, then we'll come back and bring, bring, if we're successful with that and the board is satisfied with that, then we will bring that back for approval.
I agree. I agree with that.
Okay. Trustees, does N- anyone else have any questions or com- comments on thi- this item?
No, I don't.
No, I don't.
So my understanding is you're gonna go back for an MOU to try and get all all of these librarians, et cetera, equal oper- like the equal payment, correct? Like, that's what we're shooting for? Is that what I'm understanding?
So what I'm, what I'm hearing from the board right now is that the, the librarian media coordinators who weren't moving to eight hours to discuss with CSCA the opportunity through an MOU to increase their hours to eight because it's really, it's coming down to two, two schools, El Mirage and Adelanto. And so at that point is the discussion would be is how do we increase their hours? Uh, and, and possibly have some other assignments that are attached. Uh, what I heard is possibly can they work in small groups? Is there other duties, intervention support, things like that? And that, then that is gonna take, uh, uh, it's gonna require negotiations through an MOU.
Okay, but potentially we would be even across the board.
Yes, so, so the goal would be is to, to have all of the librarian media coordinators all eight hours.
Okay, perfect. I just, I wanna, I wanted to verify that. Like, all of our kids are gonna have the equity and the advantages to those opportunities. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, and any other tru- trustees have com- com- comments or que- questions?
No.
Okay, so we are going to approve with dir- dir- direct re- erection from the board, right? You got it? All right. That there will be fur- further no- no- no go negotiations so that the two who did not get the extra hour, hour, hours will somehow get the extra.
Yeah.
Go ahead. I want us to be clear.
Yeah. So in the meantime, while we're doing that, I will work with the site principals to see how they can increase their hours on a timesheet. So it'd be additional time. It'd be very similar to working eight hours, but it's just additional time. So, so the additional seventh and eighth hour of their day would be on a timesheet. So I can, I can work with them on that. And then I'll provide an update before we actually bring it to the board, a, a private updating close session.
Okay. Okay, so let's go ahead and any other questions? Are we clear?
Okay.
Okay, uh, call for vote.
So Madam President, just want to verify. I have first by Webster, second by trustee Turner. Uh, we're gonna approve with the caveat that we're gonna get an MOU to get everyone the same hours.
Yes.
Okay, I'll go ahead and take the vote. Trustee Webster.
Aye.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Eckes.
Aye.
Trustee Benz.
Ben's I mo- mo- motion pa- passes five zero zero. Okay, so we, we go, go on to fif- fifteen, uh, fif- fifteen point zero zero one. There, it is a five per percent in increase to bor- board mem- members based sal- salary. Uh, month, monthly stipend e- effect effective Jul- July first, twenty twenty-two per ed code. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Eckes.
Good, a motion from Eckes. I need a sec- second.
Turner.
Who was that?
Turner, second.
Okay, thank you, Turner. Okay, we're o- open for di- discussion? I don't know where I'm gonna spend that whole fourteen dollars.
No, it was thirteen dollars and.
Thirteen eighty-nine cents. Hey, I'm round, rounding.
I can get two days of Starbucks.
I've been up to two hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-two cents per month.
You know, I just want to say something. I, I think you all know I've been here eighteen years and we never got raises, ever, 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 ever. So thank you, Mr. Kraus. It's, it's about time, you know, eighteen years, I'm starting to get a raise now. I mean, this is amazing. And I was told that basically all along, we were supposed to get raises, but we never did. So just thank you. It's about time. This is awesome. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, I call for the vote. Vote, please.
Trustee Webster.
Aye.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Eckes.
Aye.
Trustee Benz.
Ben's I mo- motion pa- passes five zero. Zero. Okay, move, moving on to fif- fifteen point zero two biz- business ser- services, approval of the lev- levy of spec- special ta- taxes resolu- lutions number twenty-two point twenty-three point zero two. There's a whole bunch of num- the numbers. Twenty-two point twenty-three point zero three, twenty-two point twenty-three point zero four, twenty-two point twenty-three point zero five and twenty-two point twenty-three point zero six. And the Board of Trustees of Adalanto Elementary School Dist- District, a- acting as the ledge legislative bot- body of community facilities, did District One Improvement Area A Community Facil- Facilities District Number Two Improvement Air, Air, Area A District Commu- Community Facil- Facility Facilities, did District Number Three Improvement Area A and Community Facil- Facilities District Number Four for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Can I get a mo- motion to, to approve?
Wow. Motion to approve.
Okay, I'll give it the to E- E- Eckes. She, she snuck in and I'll give the se- second to Turner.
Oh, I didn't have you speak on that. I just jumped, jumped, jumped the gun.
Okay, well, we're, we're op- open for dis- discussion. Can you explain what this is, Mr. Kraus, please?
Yes, thank you, President Benz, members of the board. We have Mr. Jesse Landry, who's with us this evening on Zoom. Mr. Landry, would you mind just briefly talking about this? And while he's gearing up, you may recall, Mr. Murray in his presentation talked about that development going on in our district. And so we have four community facility districts and there's, there is a lot of development going on recently as you saw there. But Mr. Landry, can you just briefly talk about this annual item that we see before the board?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Kraus, and good evening, members of the board. My name's Jesse Landry with Key Analytics. And we help the district with administering their community facilities districts, all shortened that to CFD program. So as the district, as you guys are aware, we have CFD one, two, three, and four, and some improvement areas in there as well. Uh, CFD one is built out, CFD two is built out. So these are the same levies each year. We did see some development. If the district remembers the, I won't call it a painstaking process, but the many items the board approved back in December and then in January, as we amended CFD number four for that new Santalina development for DR Horton. Now that we made those amendments, that project's taken off quite a bit. We saw about a hundred and twenty-three new homes get permitted. So when those building permits get issued, that triggers the levy of the special tax. And then that's what you see in this year's levy is an increase in the levy amount for CFD four. So again, as Mr. Kraus mentioned, this is an annual process each year where the board approves these levies. What we'll do from that, um, once the board approves is we'll take those levy amounts, we'll go to the County of San Bernardino, we'll, we'll enroll these taxes and they'll appear on folks' property tax bills in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, just one piece to note is that as these homes are sold to the homeowners, they are provided disclosure, they're made aware of the special tax. Um, no problems historically in this last year for any, you know, collection or delinquencies. They've all been very low for all the CFDs. So again, annual process. I, once, once it's approved, this will allow the opportunity to levy the taxes as we've as the documents have set forth whenever we form the CFDs.
Okay, board, do, do you ha- have N- any que- questions? Okay, yeah, I just jumped, jumped on in, in there, read the whole thing, lost myself and let's said, let's go, go on. But thank, thank you for explaining that. Okay, so please call for the vote.
Trustee Webster.
Aye.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Eckes.
Aye.
Trustee Benz.
Ben's I mo- motion pa- passes five zero. Okay, go, going on to fif- fifteen point zero three bi- business ser- surfaces, uh, approval of the, the authorization zation to temporarily did we miss the L Y there? Bar- borrow be, be between funds for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year res- resolution number twenty-one point twenty-three point zero one. Do you want to speak on this before we open up?
Sure, thank you, President Benz. This item authorizes the Treasurer's Department, the County of San Bernardino Treasurer's Department to if they need to borrow funds to pay the district obligations, this has never happened, but at the, uh, it's an annual item that comes before the board in the event that there's a meltdown in the, in the world somehow, and they have to borrow from other funds from between the districts. So uh, that's all it allows them to do. Again, we never anticipate them using this, but they still need it approved by the governing board speech district to be able to do that should something happen.
Okay, uh, can, can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Webster, I motion.
Okay, I have a mo- motion by Web- Webster. Can I get a sec- second?
Turner, a second.
Thank you. Now we're o- open for dis- discussion?
So what I'm understanding is this is basically a fail safe in case we like run out of money or something, correct?
That is correct. So our main fund is the general fund, the largest fund where we receive a little over a hundred million in revenues. If for whatever reason, the state says you're not getting any revenues from Fund O-one. This allows the county treasurer to go into, say, Fund thirteen, Fund forty, where we have a a little bit of money, but nothing to be able to keep us going. But it just allows the treasurer's office to do that legally uh, should they have to do that. Uh, we, again, we never anticipate the state saying we're not giving you any money.
Thank you so much.
Okay, can we call forward for the vote?
Trustee Webster.
Aye.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Eckes.
This is a new one for me. I'm not too crazy about it, but yeah, I.
Trustee Benz.
Ben's I mo- motion pass, pass, passes five zero zero. Okay, go, going on to fif- fifteen point zero four biz- business ser- services. Uh, approval of the, uh, agree- agreement with CPM for construction man- management ser- services for the dis- district pool ren- renovation. Uh, Mr. Kraus?
Yes, thank you. You might recall, uh, earlier this year, the board approved CPM as the, the construction management firm. And what happens after that is that our legal counsel for the district- And what happens after that is that our legal counsel for the district works with the company to finalize an agreement that again would come back before the board. So fifteen oh four is the agreement that our legal counsel worked with their team on. Uh and with approval of this this evening, uh work will start tomorrow morning bright and early.
Okay, uh can can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Webster, I motion.
And can I get a sec- sec- second?
I turn a second.
Okay, um and any dis- discussion?
Yes, um again, I wanted to ask, cause we've never done this before, to my knowledge. Why do we need a construction management service and not just go straight through to the architects?
That's a great question, trustee Akas. So in the absence of having a facility staff. Uh hired through the district, we do not have any facility staff here that works for the district. We have to have somebody that monitors all of the project from the start to finish. They will oversee the architect, they will oversee the. Uh general contractor, they will oversee all of the permits with the city or whatever governmental agencies that we have to get that through. And so again, because we do not have a facilities person that works for the district. Um because of our, we're such a small district, we normally contract out for these kind of services and they will be the oversight person that works for us. Uh making sure that everyone else is doing the job that they're hired to do.
Okay, and that's normal, cause in the past, I could have sworn the architects did all that, no?
No, uh it is normal to hire a construction management firm, uh if we do not have facilities that. For example, if we had a facilities person on uh tab for the district, they would be out there overseeing the architect and the construction firm. We wouldn't have to hire somebody. So in the future, at some point, perhaps the district will hire uh an internal facilities person. And then we wouldn't have to have a management firm. But in the absence of that, we have to have somebody that uh puts those checks and balances in place. Because we want to ensure the that our district is being protected even from the architect. Because though although we hire the architect, which is the next item, somebody still has to oversee the work that they're doing and make sure that they are doing what they should be.
Thank you. I knew I needed to understand that, and I'm sure lots of people out in the public need to understand that too. So thank you for explaining that.
Also, if anything happens, say during the job, do they take liability for the situation as the management service?
Oh yes, that's what our legal counsel makes sure of. That's why the agreements are pretty lengthy and very detailed. Uh because it indemnifies the district and make sure that the 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 management firm. Or whoever the company is that was responsible for that oversight uh will make it right at the end of the day. At no cost to the district.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go go ahead and call for the the vote.
I.
Trustee Turner.
I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Akas.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I mo- motion pass passes five zero zero. Okay, go going on to fif- fifteen point zero five biz- business ser- services. Approval of the agreement with B P B K art architects for the pool ren- renovate. Bay-bation.
Yes, thank you. Uh this item again is the uh the board had approved prior to this meeting. P B K is the architects for the pool renovation project. And this is the agreement that was worked out with them and our legal counsel. And again, they will be working under the oversight of C P M. Uh but ultimately, our legal counsel and myself and our team here, uh Mr. Crenshaw with our M and O department, will also be overseeing. Um these, the architect and the construction as well. So once the, if this is board approved this evening. They will start again with C P M bright and early tomorrow morning and be out here working on getting the uh. The next step in the project, by the way, for the board and the community is getting a bid for a general contractor. So that is what the architect will do. They'll come out here, they'll uh uh create the work in much more greater detail. Then the bid will go out on the market. And tho- that will be a hard bid. It will not be a proposal. It will actually be a hard bid. And then that will come before the board and uh the board will hopefully approve the general contractor to begin the process of renovating the pool.
I need a a mo- motion to uh uh approve.
Motion to approve, La French.
Thank you, and I need a sec- second.
Webster, I second.
Okay, we're o- open for dis- discussion discussions or que- questions?
They'll be showing us the sketches and stuff, right, before they start?
Absolutely, and that's what the architect will do. The the uh, they're very good about doing renditions. And we will make sure that the board and the community see the renditions of the work that is uh the general contractor will hopefully be performing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um please call for for the vote.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Akas.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I mo- motion pa- passes five zero. Okay, go going on to fif- fifteen point zero six. Approval of the agree- agreement with with the ci- city of Ad- Adelanto for the di- district to demolish. demolish the de- de lap-lapitated house that current currently sits on the property of. One seven eight four five John Jonathan Street, Ad- Adelanto, California. Nine two three zero one within sixty days of the close of escrow. Um.
You wanna just really quick?
Yes, thank you, President Benz. So the board might recall that we were in process of purchasing this property to extend our M and O yard to Jonathan Street. And I believe this week we should wrap up the final escrow. And at which time, the city had asked uh the district to remove the property. We'd already intended, the house had been partially burnt. It's boarded up. It's uh really been an eyesore for the city. So this agreement just basically stipulates that uh upon the close of escrow. Once we take full ownership, we will demolish the house. And we already had intentions of doing that and then putting the fence up around the property until. Uh future uses are determined.
Okay, I need a mo- motion to uh approve.
Webster, I motion.
And I need a sec- second.
Turner, I second.
Turn now. Okay, we're open for dis- discussion?
How quickly will this happen?
Upon the close of escrow, the district has sixty days to level the house. And that's all we need to do is just have a company come in and. And uh I know our purchasing department is working on getting uh a company to come in and then our our M and O staff will also oversee it. Uh the removal of this property. It'll happen fairly quickly. Um the house is definitely an eyesore. I went over there today and um. It's just, it it looks terrible. So uh we're, we really wanna help out and help improve the um, you know, the neighborhood by taking that house down.
Yeah, I would recommend the sooner the better, cause I'm assuming we're liable for the house and the property in case anything should happen there.
That is correct. So the minute that we take ownership of it, and that's why we already have the fence company ready to go. The minute they get the green light to put a fence up and then uh also tear down the house as quick as possible.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, can we call for the vote?
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Akas.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I motion passes five zero. Holy cow, is it true?
Yes, keep going. Don't stop.
Oh my goodness.
Do not pause.
I'm stunned. Hold on, I I I need need twenty, twenty min- minutes to recoup myself. No, I'm just kidding. Okay, can can I please get a a mo- motion to adjourn?
You websters.
Web- Webster's second seconds. Discussion?
It's fine.
What?
Call for the vote, please. Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
I don't know, I think we should stick around.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Akas. Trustee Benz.
I. Mo- motion pass powers trespasses five zero zero. The time is now nine eleven. Love and please have a great night. Thank, thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night, la- ladies.